Turn my mic on. It's a script meeting, please. Stand if you're willing and able to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ooh, you know what? I'm getting ahead of myself, aren't I? I needed an A. No, now I do. Approval of the agenda.
Come on.
Thank you, Mrs. Powell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss.
Maybe just with the agenda, we will move up the audit report and the veterans memorial presentation immediately following the consent agenda. So, thank you to our guests for coming here tonight and we'll get that so they don't have to stick around until... You could stick around for truth in taxation if you want, so...
It's exciting stuff.
That'll be one thing that we'll look at, so...
All right. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any visitors? Did anyone sign up? Did you? Okay. Sorry. Usually Deb checks for us.
I think somebody else put yes on there, too.
Okay. Good evening.
I'm Roger Algrismar. I got the whole big thing about the meeting, so I... A whole lot of things in there. You know, one item, that's about money, and one that's not. The thing about money is it says that you failed to have your staff check all the taxes and what to do, and I think that was probably a right move. If either the courthouse or the auditor is honest, you already got good information, and that maybe they could change the laws that you don't have to check all that. I've taken an auditing course, there's a way to check without doing a whole lot of work. But, the other one, I heard little things here and there, and I had my own opinions as to how to do things. And about a week ago, I seen something on TV that kind of chilled my attitude. I've heard, and I don't know if it's just a couple people's experience or if it's just the way it goes here, but I heard from a student down at a former teacher that when someone gets sent to the office, nothing happens. And, well, as raised, if there's not consequences, you learn wrong. If you learn, you can get by with it. And I don't know how big an infraction these things they were talking about, but I seen on TV the other day that someone from Department of Corrections says nowadays criminals continue to violate, 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 violate. And that means that they learn when they're young, we get by with stuff. And so, I'm not just talking to this school, I'm saying about the whole general situation. You know, I heard the other night at the meeting that you keep having this reason why everybody does it that way nowadays. If everybody does it for a good reason, that's fine. If they got a bad reason... But I've seen, that was the time I was in homeless shelters, and 10 years before that, I took an education class at Augustana, and they said 20-some thousand students in Sioux Falls and nobody had failed in four years. And like, well, they're gonna learn, they don't have to learn anything. And then 10 years later, I'm in a homeless shelter, and that age group, they could sit there totally, totally good self-esteem just because they weren't causing trouble, even though they weren't working or listening to work. And they learned at school, if we do nothing and just don't cause trouble, we're fine. So, these attitudes, when they're young, you know, and it's nothing more about this school than any other one, but if kids get by with stuff, and they grow up... I seen a 70-year-old guy walk through the door in a homeless shelter mad one day. He'd been in prison for life twice, and out. He was the total con artist. He could get by with stuff, he could get out if he got caught. He's going through the door mad, saying, "How come I can't trust tramps anymore?" And he told about how he done a hit-and-run by accident by running through a red light and jumped out of his van and ran and told the cops that his van was stolen. Well, I told the staff. I worked security when I was young, so I learned a different point of view. This old guy says, "Don't you have mothers? My mother always lied for me and covered for me." And if someone lies for you, it's not necessarily the poor that become criminals, it's those that earn and get by with it.
And Roger, I hate to interrupt you, we have three-minute limit. I don't know if you can see the policy that's written up there. Sorry.
Okay.
So...
My finger is up?
Yeah. So, the concerns, the mostly concerns I heard were the checking the dollar amounts and then the discipline.
Yeah.
Correct? Is that your two main concerns?
I suppose, sorry.
It is noted. Thank you very much, sir. Any other visitors? All right. Thank you. Going on to 4. ... Nope. 5. ... Yep, 5. And 5.1 through 5.7, the consent agenda, approving all of those. And did you want to mention that last one?
We do have 5.7 is the work session minutes. We do also have on our new business, we will be talking about that work session again, but this is just approval of those minutes as they're presented by Ms. Bierstedt.
So...
So, we'll just, we can just approve them, but we will talk about them later in the new business, so...
Thank you. So, are there any items within that consent agenda that anyone would like pulled up? No? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor... Oh, I need a motion. Yeah? Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as is?
Some of them.
Thank you, Mr. Botts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman.
Can I also, I'd like to just thank, we have an anonymous donor who donated $100 to our wellness center, and also the donation of $6,000 by the Pipestone J.C.'s for a new permanent fence out at the softball field. So, thank you to Anonymous and to the J.C.'s for their donation for the softball fence.
All right. Thank you. So, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, 5.1 through 5.7, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are going to move up the audit report. So, ma'am?
Welcome.
Welcome back.
Everybody should have had a copy, run it on and pass it out to everybody, plus I think Jackie probably provided a PDF copy to everyone. So, we have got a 90-page document here, and so I'm going to try and condense my presentation into what I would want to see if I was sitting in the, your chairs. So, with that said, I want to start on pages 3, 4, and 5. And what we have on pages 3, 4, and 5 is our auditor's report. This is where we render our opinion on the financial statements. And what this report states is that, in our opinion, the financial statements that come after this report present fairly the financial position and the results of operations of the district as of and for the year ending June 30th, 2017. It's an unqualified opinion. We also have a secondary opinion, if you will, on page 5. Our audit was conducted for the purpose of forming an opinion on the financial statements. In the back of the report, there's also information regarding federally funded programs. And this top paragraph and the next paragraph below it basically states is that our audit opinion extends to those schedules as well as the financial schedules in the report. Again, it's an unqualified opinion, and as I've said in the past, if it were anything other than that, we'd be talking to you well before this evening. So, that is, that is good. That's what you're shooting for, is an unqualified opinion. And with that said, then I want to move to the fund data. Information in the front of the report is very condensed. In the back of the report, we include supplemental schedules which provide that same data, but in a much more detailed information. So, starting on page 62 and continuing through page 66, we've got the general fund activities. Again, this is just general fund only. Format of all of these funds, for the most part, is first column is the budget, second column is the 2017 actual, third column from the left is the variance of the budget, and the far right-hand column is the 2016 actual results. So, again, I'm just gonna hit totals here, but at the very bottom of the page, the district had budgeted for $13,176,616 of total general fund revenue. Your revenue actually came in on the next column over of 13 million, 344,408. So, you did better than budget by 167,792. A little bit better, about 1.27% better than what you had originally budgeted. Comparing that to your 2016 actual, you were $13,010,08. Your revenue was up 334,300 comparing '16 to '17. Going throughout the pluses and minuses, there are various increases and decreases. No one specifically stood out. General education revenue was considerably higher. Other revenue, state aids, were lower. Special education aid was larger. A lot of the other state aids were considerably larger than what had been budgeted for, so those were the items that came in. Federal programs, you were $26,248 higher than what you had originally budgeted there. So, with that said, the next page starts with our expenditures. The first category of expenditures is administration, broken down in that first section on the top of page 63. You had budgeted for $1,076,675. Actual came in at 879,031. So, you did better than budget by 197,644 in the administration category. The next category of district and school administration is support services. Budgeted for 373,624. Actual was 344,804. So, you did better than budget by 28,820 in that category. Coming down then, the next category of expenditures is regular instruction, and that's broken down into several categories. The very first one, in the middle of page 63, district-wide regular instruction, 559, 385 was budgeted. 458, 953 was your actual. So, you did better than budget in that category by $100,432. Then at the bottom of page 63, elementary school, under the regular instruction category, had been budgeted at $2,015,326. Came in at $2,066,710. In the particular category, you were over by $51,384. Looking at 2016, even though you were over budget, you were still $90,000 less than you were in '16 in elementary school regular instruction. Then on the top of page 64, we've got, the next category of regular instruction is middle school. Budgeted at $1,198,286. Actual came in at $1,319,108. So, we were over budget by 120,822 in the middle school. And then secondary school, the last category of regular instruction, had total expenditures budgeted of $2,316,872, approximately the middle of the page on page 64. And the actual was $2,013,019. So, under the secondary school, you did better than budget by 303,853. Taking all of the regular instruction, starting on the previous page, district-wide, elementary, and then on this page, middle and secondary school, total regular instruction for the district, you had budgeted $6,089,869. Your actual came in at $5,857,790. So, you did overall budget in the regular instruction category better than budget by Comparing 2016 with 2017, you're very close. It's within about $3,450, '16 to '17. So, as all of the regular instruction comes together, you're really very close to 2016, but considerably under your budgeted numbers. Last category on page 64, vocational instruction, 247,779 was budgeted. 257,867 was actual. So, you did better than budget, a little over budget, I should say, of $10,088. And at the top of page 65, exceptional instruction, the very first category, $2,368,862 was budgeted. Actual was $2,255,054. So, you did better than budget by 113,808. Instructional support services, 548,56 was budgeted, and 598 was your actual. So, you were over budgeted in that category by $48,742. And then pupil support services was $1,556,746. And the actual expenditures came in at $1,443,688. So, you're under budget by 113,058. Pupil support is the transportation of the students. That's the category that moves the kids in the district. And then the top of page 66, site buildings and equipment. That's for maintenance of the overall physical structures and operations and maintenance. Actual, excuse me, budgeted was $1,455,959. Actual was $1,351,036. So, you were under budget in that category by 104,923. And the last expenditure category in the general fund was property insurance. 86,5 was budgeted. 81,956 was actual. So, you're under budget by $4,544. Taking all of the categories of expenditures from the previous pages, you had budgeted for overall general fund expenditures of 13,796,870. Actual came in at $13,060,824. So, you were under budget in expenditures by 736,046. So, a little better than 5.3% of the overall total budget. When we subtract the expenditures of $13,060,824 from the revenue on the first page, page 62, of $13,344,408, that gives the general fund, excess revenues are going forward in 2017 by 283,584. Ending fund balance in the general fund is $5,333,853. If I could have you just kind of stick your finger in this page and then just go to page 41, and it'll actually carry on to 42. Of that 5,338,53, there are various spending restrictions on those funds, and we'll just run through those quickly. On the top of page 41, under the general fund, of that fund balance, $46,293 is considered, what they say, non-spendable. It's for prepaid expenditures that'll be expensed in the 17, '18 fiscal year. Just below that is restricted fund balance. If you see in the middle of the page, restricted fund balance, and below that, under the highlight general fund, those are the various restricted, state-restricted fund balances. So, that's $939,527. Of that $5,333,853 is restricted strictly for those spending categories. That's what the dollars can go for. There's revenues that go into those each year and expenditures that are charged against them. And then on the next page, middle of the page, Deb, in the middle of the page, there is a committed fund balance of $226,251, which is committed for severance pay. So, of that 5,338,53, 226,251 is committed. And then just below that, assigned fund balance, health cost management, athletic help fund and health fund, there's $8,630 of fund balance in the assigned category. And then just below that is unassigned fund balance. Of the total fund balance, $4,113,152 is considered unassigned or basically available to use for any, any purpose within, within the general fund. So, if we go back to page 66, that's the breakdown of those fund balances. The district has a policy where they're trying to maintain at least 25% to 34% of an average year's expenditures. Using a three-year average, you're at 31.9% unassigned fund balance. So, you're not at the low, you're not at the high, you're probably 2/3 of the way towards the, the high side. So, you're within your policy and just probably on what I probably consider the upper end of touching the top of the policy.
Where would that be for, as far as state recommendations? Do you think?
The state used to throw out a five to six months, but that got kind of really tough to maintain in the last 10 or 15 years. So, I would say most of our districts are probably in the 25% to 35% range. And really, if they're getting there, they're really happy, if they're getting in that range.
Same, yeah.
Yep. You know, it's, I mean, your job is not to create fund balance either, you know?
No.
That's the other side of it. You have to have some fund balance to work with, but yet you're not here to generate fund balance, you're here to educate the kids as best you can, as economically as you can for the citizens and the best education for the kids. So, you kind of got that... But you have to have some fund balance. I mean, you can't operate on a zero budget.
Right. Because it was a few years ago where the state withheld funding.
There was not...
Considerable amount of time.
Well, it seemed like not too long ago, but there were years when they had a pupil, per pupil unit fund balance limitation.
Yep.
X number of dollars per pupil units. You took it times the pupil units. Anything above that, they just took it on your state aid the following year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, they do look at it, although you recall in the last, near future, or recent future, they haven't done it. And I don't know if you were even doing it back when they had the fund balance limitation, but...
Yeah, that never happened when I was here.
No. But there was a time when they looked at your fund balance, and like I said, they took your pupil unit, your enrollment, and they did the math, and after that...
They withhold cash. When they do their tax shift, they say, "We're only gonna give you 63% off..."
Right.
"...of what you have coming." Because that's all the state balances there, but the...
But theoretically, that should be tiny. You should eventually get that, you know? It's not a total...
Right. But you want the cash there, so you don't have to borrow.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly. Yep, yep, exactly.
And that wasn't that long ago that they'd done that.
That's correct.
And I have a handful that still do, right at the end of the year, and then, you know, when they get their next tax settlement, they take care of it. But I have a handful that still do. It's that type, yeah. Any other general fund questions I can answer for anybody? If not, then the next, the two funds that we're gonna deal with are gonna be food service, and they start on page 69 for food service, and page 70 for community service. Food service, middle of page 69, we've got budgeted revenues of $877,412. Actual came in at $948,309. So, you did better than budget by $70,008,97. Going down through the expenditures, 820,986 was budgeted for expenditures. 838,880 was your actual. So, you were actually over budgeted in the expenditure category by $17,894. When you subtract the expenses of 838,880 from the 948,309 above, the food service fund went forward by 109,429. Ends the year with a positive fund balance of $113,000, excuse me, $220,984. And that's, in my opinion, good for food service. I have a lot of school district food services struggling to get to the break-even point or maintain a small loss. So, previous year, that was $137,000 for, not profit, but going forward by $137,000 the previous year. So, you were in a deficit at the end of 2015, had a profit in '16, and a profit in '17, and end the year with a good fund balance of 222,984.
Like, what do, like, for the food service balance, I mean, what do, I know you say a lot of schools don't, you know, make the break-even point, but I mean, is this probably at the point where maybe we're sitting with, with too much? I don't, I don't know if there's a comfortable amount, I guess. I don't, I don't know.
You know, when you look at the expenditures, Tammy, $838,000 expenditure, 788 the previous year, so what, 810, 820 on an average? So, you got about a fourth of a year's fund balance in reserve. I personally don't think that's excessive.
It's, I mean, it's okay. Okay. I just...
Yep, yep. Again, back to the comment, you're not here to generate a fund balance.
Right, right.
You're here to provide, in this case, meals, affordable quality meals to the kids that, you know, to everyone. I don't think that, you know, you take, if, if this fund was to get charged for some kitchen equipment or something like that along the way...
Sure.
You can go through a couple hundred thousand dollars really quick.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yep. I didn't think about that part of it. Yep.
Yeah. So, if you, if it was a food addition that you were gonna charge to the food service fund, that would go really quickly. So, you know, if you were sitting on $500, $600,000 fund balance double, or, you know, two and a half times that, it might be something that you'd have to look at your rates and that type of thing.
Okay.
And then on page 70, we have the community service fund. Total revenues, middle of the page, were budgeted at 413,093. Actual were 422,035. So, there was a better-than-budget variance there of 89,42. The expenditures were budgeted at 354,687. Actual were 340,841. So, we were under budget by 13,846. Subtracting the revenues, excuse me, expenses from the revenues above, that fund went forward by 81,194. Ends of the fund, ends the year with a fund balance of $183,784. Again, I'd like to just stick your finger in there, and we'll, we've gotta show you the breakdown of that fund balance. And if I can get you to turn to page 42. There's a fund balance of $183,784. The very first category in the top of page 42, community service fund. Those are the four spending categories, community ed, ECFE, learning readiness, and just restricted community service funds. So, basically, all of those funds are restricted strictly for community service and those particular categories within community service. Again, just revenues will go into there, specific revenues dedicated to that, and then expenditures will go against that on an annual basis. Okay. Then the next fund I want to deal with is an easy one, on page 73, the debt service fund. This fund exists strictly to take in property taxes and pay out principal and interest on the outstanding building construction debt. Total revenue was budgeted at $1,0586,335. Actual came in at $1,0513,793. So, we're under budget by 72,542. Expenses were budgeted at $1,0533,758. Actual came in at $1,0533,757. We should've just rounded it up to make that even to a dollar. But suffice it to say, you guys are spot on with the expenditures. Taking those expenditures away from the revenue above, there are excess expenditures, so in other words, there are more expenses than revenues, of $19,964. And I think that's part of the wind-down process as they're trying to narrow the gap in that, because when that bond is paid off in 2020, they would like to have your levy and your bond expenditures come down to as close to zero as possible. So, I think that's why we've had a deficit the last couple of years, is their states adjusting the levy so that when we get to that end of the issue in 2020, it's all, comes to a nice zero. It won't be exactly zero, but it should be very close. At June 30th, 2017, there was $4,485,000 of debt outstanding. And again, the final payment will be March 1st of 2020. Which, for somebody who was here when it happened, that really seemed like it went Okay. The next, that's basically the fund financial statements. I'm gonna go through the remaining information rather quickly because it's kind of ties back to that. But on page 74, we've got the Uniform Financial Accounting and Reporting Standards Compliance Table. This is where your first column is your audited information. This is prescribed by the state, how this goes in. The second column is the UFRS, the Unifying Financial Accounting and Reporting System, which is maintained on the smart finance system. And then we're required to put in the difference between the audited numbers and the UFRS system. And you can see there's a couple places we're off by a dollar. Other than that, you were, your numbers agree exactly with the, with the compliance table, and it has to. It can't be anything other than that, or otherwise we have to work with Jackie and make sure that everything is in there appropriately, but we are off a couple dollars for rounding here and there. And then there is, on page 75, there's a couple of, a couple more independent auditors reports. On page 75, we've got our independent auditors report on internal control and on compliance. And two types of compliance are tested. Compliance with a publication called the Minnesota Legal Compliance Audit Guide for Political Subdivisions, and the other is overall general government auditing standards. And then we also test the district's internal control, and that's the way transactions move through the district, receipts, disbursements, approvals, basically the whole accounting chain of events that happens with transactions, both receipts, disbursements, and those types of things. And on the top of page 76, second paragraph, we do have three items that are findings and recommendations, which we'll deal with in a second here, are basically the same that we've had in all of the district financials in the past, that we consider to be material weaknesses in, in internal control. In regards to compliance with government auditing standards in the Minnesota Legal Compliance Audit Guide, we found no instances of non-compliance with that. So, that's, that's good in that regard. Then on page 78 and 79 and page 80, we have another independent auditor's report. And this is the same type of system, compliance and internal control, but this is compliance and internal control as it relates to your federally funded programs under the publication called the Uniform Guidance, which is put out for our testing in regard to federally funded programs. And basically, the same findings and recommendations we'll deal with in the back here apply to the federally funded programs, it's just different wording saying the same thing. So, with that said, I want to take you to page 85 then. And on page 85, because you receive or spend greater than $750,000 of federal funds in a year, your audit is conducted under a publication called the Uniform Guidance, which is the federal government's publication that gives us specific instructions and things to test in regard to the federally funded program. So, what we've got on the top of page 85 is a schedule of the federal programs put out by the government, which the school district is a recipient of. Very first subtotal in your overall, your largest category of federal revenue comes in the child nutrition cluster through the Department of Children, Families, and Learning. $527,744 was expended, received and expended in that category, and that's your school breakfast program, school lunch program, milk and the summer service program. Then we have three other Department of Education programs that give funds flow through the district. For the most part, these come from the Service Cooperative. The top one comes from the Service Cooperative, $195,624. And then direct monies to the district, Title One and Title Two, five nine, five fifty nine, seven thirteen, and two thirty four, five nineteen. So overall, the district received just about a little million dollars of total federal funding for the year. And the district will, not the district, but the feds will use this to reconcile those numbers back to a report that we will send to them. So, then on page eighty six, I'm not gonna touch on the items, this is items that are specifically in, under number one, summary of auditor's results. These are items that we have to address for the federal government when they process this through the federal system when we submit the audit report to the feds. But starting on page eighty seven, we have the findings and recommendations. These are the items that we're commenting on regarding internal control. The very first one, nineteen ninety nine dash zero zero one, internal accounting controls. The district has a small staff within the accounting function, and we don't have an adequate segregation of duties between individuals within the system. And so we're commenting on that. It's real hard to get more people involved in the accounting system without hiring additional people. You guys as the board are part of the mitigating circumstance, I think I've said this in the past, when you're approving bills, approving things that Jackie or other staff members give to you, going through them, if you have a question, ask the question and keep asking the question till you get an answer you're satisfied with. You're part of the oversight process and the lack of segregation duties, it does not mean that the district's doing anything wrong, we just don't have the luxury of having separated individuals and then oversight over those individuals to double check and cross check the information. It just is not economically feasible. There is, all of the audits that our firm does, city, school, district, nonprofits, with the exception of one, has this comment in it, as well as the others. Next comment is just below it, two thousand seventeen dash zero zero one, GAAP financial statements. That has to do with the publication, what we're looking at right here, the ninety page document. Our responsibility is to put in the auditor's reports and render the opinions, but as part of our agreement with the, the school district and with all of the school districts, cities and nonprofits that our firm does, we also contract to do the financial statements. Prepare the financial statements so that, so that they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, which is what the GAAP refers to. It's not something that Jackie can go to an afternoon class and come back and have the ability to do GAAP financial statements. So it has no reflection on the bookkeeping, the work that's being done at the district office. It has to do with the actual preparation of the financial statements. And with that said, on the top of page eighty eight, audit adjustments. Jackie and I just talked about this, so this will be gone in your next audit. But there's one significant receivable, and it has to do with property taxes receivable and receipt of, and it's, it's not a difficult process, but you need to be familiar with the property tax accounting site. School districts are June thirty year ends, property taxes are levied, levied on a calendar year end. So what you levy and levy like now, won't be recognized in revenue until your eighteen, nineteen school year, and you're getting taxes from the county on delinquents and current year and actually subsequent year taxes, and you get a lot of buckets to fill up. We're gonna work with Jackie to go through that so that she'll be able to basically do ninety nine percent of that here in the district office, so that comment will be, will be removed. But due to the fact that property taxes are a significant dollar amount in the, in the report, we're required to put that in there. And then middle of the page, page eighty eight, number three, major federal award programs. We, as crazy as it sounds, we have to reiterate all three of those again as they relate to federally funded programs. We can't do it twice in the same report, you have to reiterate it all over again. And that is my report presentation. Everyone should have two loose letters in the back of their report. Very first one should say communication, well, the one I'll first of all go through is communication with those, those charged with governance. Middle of the page, significant audit findings, qualitative aspects of accounting practices. If there were any new accounting pronouncements that we wanted to have, make sure that the district approved implementing, we would discuss that here. Luckily, there were no new accounting pronouncements that affected this district's financials this year, so we really have nothing to report there. Top of the next page, accounting estimates. If there are accounting estimates in the financial statements, we're required to bring to your attention the significant ones. The two biggest estimates are general education aid and special education aid, and as Jackie will attest to, those numbers are a moving target right up through, all the way through this fiscal year for June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. I looked at the website this afternoon, and between the two, we're probably light, actually light on revenue by about eight thousand dollars. So if anything, we're a little bit light, you've got a little bit more, according to the last computation on the ideas report. So we're required to at least tell you what those estimates are. I always like to check them along the way to make sure we're close, and that's very close considering they're both significant numbers. Middle of the page, difficulties encountered in performing the audit, no significant difficulties. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements. To our knowledge, there are no uncorrected misstatements. We've worked with Jackie, our staff, and when we were here doing the fieldwork, making adjustments for anything that needed to be adjusted for receivables, payables, those types of things. Disagreements with management, if we had had any disagreements with management, we would discuss that here. Happy to report that we've had no disagreements with management during the course of our audit. Top of page three, consultations with other independent accountants. If either the district or our firm thought it was necessary to talk to another firm about maybe the application of an accounting principle or contentious accounting issue, we would discuss that here. We've had no such consultations. Other audit findings and our issues, we're around three hundred sixty five days a year, so any one school board member's superintendent, Jackie, can contact us during the year. I'd rather talk during the year than look at things and wish we'd have talked during the year. So that's kinda what the, the middle one says in a short paragraph. We can't make management decisions, decisions for the district, but we definitely would be a sounding board and would give you any information we could regarding any issue you might have that comes up. Other matters in regard to the financial statements, there is supplementary information, which is what we just went through, that is not a required part of the financial statements, but we put it in there so that you guys have more detailed schedules, rather condensed information. And again, our audit procedures apply to that supplemental information as well as the core information in the front of the report. And that covers that four page letter, then the last one's really quick. Management letter. Behind this letter is the auditing adjustments that we've worked through with Jackie's assistance, and they have all been inputted into the district's financials, and we've compared the financials to the, to the audit report, and that happens via that compliance table that we talked about earlier. One thing, there was a management comment before, was your counts receivable in your food service last year, if anybody remembers, like commented it was growing. You've made a significant reduction in that, it was about twenty thousand at the end of sixteen, and I think it was eighty four, a hundred, eighty five hundred dollars at the end of this year. So, and I know in the minutes and talking to the staff, you've made a concerted effort to get that receivable down, and I realize it's not gonna be perfect, down to a zero, but you cut it over in half, about one and a half times, so that's good to see. So, well, I should've put that in here as a positive comment, but that was a comment that was in here last year as far as adjusting your procedures and collecting some of those outstanding receivables. So that's my presentation for this evening. Any questions I can answer for anybody? And I've said in the past, if not, it's a ninety page document, you've got a PDF of it and now a hard copy. Don't hesitate to give me a call at a later date if you do have a comment, a comment or a question. There is a lot of information that condenses and roll, roll into making this ninety page document, so. If something, you look at something and you wonder what's in there, or a why or something, just give me a call.
Do you want to have any questions?
Maybe just Matt, I like to just, overall, in general, the financial health of the school district, you would-
I, I say it's good. You've set that, you've set that policy to try and get that twenty five to thirty four, you're thirty one, nine, I think it was. You're right on the upper side, I consider, of that, and that's what that benchmark is for, is to kinda give you a real snapshot of, of how we're doing.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, as, and then now with the extension of your operating referendum, we were kind of, you know, wavering last year at the same time when I stood up here, but that would, that would have had a significant impact on the district financials. Yes. And with that, at least being behind you from that standpoint, that makes me feel even better.
Yep.
Yep.
Anything other questions? Mr. Colber.
I'll just add one other thing, Matt.
Yeah.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate the work that you guys do, and, and you're also on the call whenever we need or have any questions.
Yeah, we, I would rather do that than come in and do the fieldwork and wish we'd have done. And Jackie does the field, and that's fine, that's great for yourself and everybody.
I think also for the board and for the community, Jackie Kennedy does a really nice job with keeping all of this straight, after being here for a year now and watching her work. Very meticulous, very thorough. Thanks, Jackie, you do a good job.
That seventeen digit code that is used in the journal accounts is, if she got that mastered, that's a, we should be-
She knows, so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. We need to approve that.
Yes.
All right. And then we also need to approve the journal entries.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Both of those.
And separately, correct?
Traditionally, yeah.
Right. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the audit report?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees, you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Talbert. Any other questions or discussion for Matt or on that audit report? Any other questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the audit report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the journal entries?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erman, and thank you, Mr. Box, for the second. Any other questions or comments or concerns or discussion on the journal entries? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the journal entries signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Talbert.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. All right, going to eight two for the veterans memorial. Come on up, Brian.
Man, I gotta go to the bathroom.
I'm broke.
I've also got it up, so if you-
Oh, perfect.
If you need it.
Look at the digital age, huh? I thought about that after I came into the print room, you guys all got iPads in front of you, but we'll make it work.
All right, this is good.
Yeah, well, good evening. For those of you who don't know me, Brian Doughty here, I'm the chairman for the veterans committee that we started here back in April. Actually, my father and Chris, you're both on the committee here with me this evening, and we have roughly twelve within the community that are, I'm sitting on this committee. I think, must've been roughly after I got back from Iraq in two thousand and seven, I think my dad approached me right away and says, "We should get a veterans memorial going," but at the time, it wasn't the right time to do it. And since I took over veteran services in Pipestone County, I've had a few people come and talk to me, so we felt it was right to start getting going on this. So we've been meeting since April, just kinda going through the discussion of how we're gonna get rolling with this, what we're gonna do, and some ideas. And what I'm looking for this evening from the school board is, as a committee, we decided the south side of the school here, which is up on the site there, is, is what we felt was the best within Pipestone. We actually had about fifteen sites that we looked at, went through a whole bunch of different criteria as far as ease of access, usability within the community, visibility from a highway, and so forth. And this is what kinda came down, it was between here and the courthouse, the kind of the two sites that came in really close. We're not by all means looking for that big of a site, I just kinda did that as a general concept of, of what we're looking for. But we are in the very early stages. We did ask three artists within the, the city limits or within Pipestone County here, Tammy Grubb, Solomon Derby, and Mark Thody all drew up a design for us. We now have possession of all three of those, so now we're gonna go back and, and work those three and probably combine them, 'cause I like things of all three of them, to make one site. So the biggest thing we're looking for tonight, and you can kinda see what I have here for talking points, is what we're looking for that we feel is the best within the, within the school district and on city or school property here is, one is highway thirty visibility, visibility for all school functions, if somebody's coming from out of town to look here, this, in my opinion, should be something that Pipestone should be proud of, and we should display for people to see. What not a better event than right next to the football field and the high school here? The other one that I think is really, really beneficial, and, and I actually didn't think about it until we talked to a few people within the community, is if it's here on the school property, the school's more, can use it as an educational purpose as well. And the reason why I say that is, the memorial that we were looking at building is something that is gonna take you through the conflicts that the United States has been in. You know, a lot of memorials you see have murals and names on them, which I, I think there's nothing wrong with that, but we visualize that we want something that's gonna go through the time that the United States has been in conflict. So history classes or whatever can go out and take a look at it and visually see some things like that. You know, and just some other things, the security would be kinda nice because it's out here on school property, seems like there's more traffic out here, so the, the security side of it would help as well. So just to reiterate, the, the biggest thing we're looking for tonight is, we would like just to seek basically a preapproval of, to start planning purposes to use the school property to move forward with this. If we get the go ahead from that, then once we get a concept drawing complete, and we figure out what size we want, things like that, then I will certainly come back to the board meeting that evening or sometime in that timeframe, present it to you what we're looking for exactly, so you can see how much property we're looking at, and so forth like that. So, so that's just what we're kinda looking for this evening, and I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have at this time. I know most of the board members have been spoken to by the committee members that we have ahead of time, so if you thought of some questions in between there, you know, we're more than welcome to answer them. So if any questions, certainly throw them my way.
Maintenance was for the school to-
Yeah, so, yeah, we didn't get that far into our discussion yet, but we would like to see a little support from the school, I guess, and that's gonna be more of just the lawn care is what we were thinking, just the general mowing around the area, which we're already kind of doing it, so we might reduce that footprint for you guys, so that'd be kinda nice. But just kinda the, the general care and the maintenance. We haven't discussed that as a committee, exactly how this is all gonna take place. I mean, we know as a committee that some of the maintenance is gonna rely on us, somebody within the community is obviously gonna be around to, to step up and help with that part of it too. But just basically, the general lawn care would be probably the biggest thing we were looking for as far as the maintenance side of it right now. I do know a good landscape company that would probably help as well. I'll certainly talk to them.
Do you foresee this being lit up, I'm guessing?
Yes. My initial envision, I guess, we'll have flagpoles out there, we'll have lights out there. One of the drawings that we had has an eternal flame in it, so that would be something that's gonna be visually seen too, if we decide to proceed with that drawing, so, but yes, we would like to have some lights on it as well.
Okay.
So, number four there on the talking points. So, there's always, every year, we have a, the proper disposal of the United States flags, which has really kinda generated some, some speed here, I guess, within the last couple of years within Pipestone County. And actually, we had a really good ceremony this last year out at the fairgrounds. But we're kinda looking for a permanent spot to do that. So this would be one site that we would like to do that as well, so it's a very dignified service that the American Legion usually takes the front of that, so that would work. And typically, we always do that, they did it in the fall, we're gonna try to get it on Flag Day, is the time we should be doing that. So we would have that ceremony as well here, and we're also looking at if there's enough property available to possibly hold a potential Memorial Day ceremony at that location as well. They currently do it at the cemetery, which is not bad, but it's not properly set up for a ceremony either, so that's what we're looking at to try to incorporate with this memorial as well, so. Any other questions?
Do you have a general idea of the size?
Honestly, we don't right now. I mean, one drawing is fairly large, and one drawing's fairly small, so I, I guess I don't have a good answer for you at this time. I don't foresee us taking that much property, that would be a very ginormous memorial, which I think would be gorgeous, but I don't think that's within our, our scope here. You know, I, I would say if it's gonna be, maybe just a couple acres at the most, so.
Visualize that tank that's on the courthouse, we move to this location if it's selected as the site. So we wanna incorporate statues that are in front of the legion, we wanna pull those out here, so if you can kinda visualize. Now, if we got an aircraft or helicopter, it'd be perfect to place out because the space is here. What do those people to a memorial, are pieces of equipment that you can relate to, you see in the news and so forth. We don't have those then, Jim. We do have the tank, we do have the statues, so.
Currently, the, the avenue of flags surrounds the courthouse.
Correct, part of it does, yes.
So, I mean, is that something that you foresee coming out here then, with, if the memorial would be out here?
I guess we haven't discussed that with that committee. We do get flags all the time added to that memorial, so we will be looking for additional space to add the flags on the community. We do get flags all the time added to that memorial, so we will be looking for additional space to add the flags on the community. Because we have roughly under, it's just short of five hundred flags, I believe, right now, that are displayed on Memorial Day, on Flag Day, veterans thing and things like that, so... It is a potential that that could get placed out here, I guess, if the time comes for it, yeah. Be a nice little drive into the school, be in line with flags, I think that would be cool.
So like, if it's lit, is there money throughout your system to help cover some of them expenses, or is that something you would like the school to take care of as well, or...
Well, that hasn't been discussed, that hasn't, yes, hasn't been discussed in our committee at this time. Right now, we're still in the very planning phases of it, we're getting some funds coming in to start help with everything. There's something, we can certainly discuss that we, you know, put them into some sort of investment fund, so we have interest coming in on it, you know, so we can help pay with the bills and things like that for the Excel bills. But as a committee, we haven't discussed that part of it yet, so...
So Brian, if this would happen, when are you seeing this being completed?
So when I first started discussing with the committee, we, I had in my head, it's gonna be a three-year project. You know, one year, just to get everything, get all the balls rolling, as soon as stuff's rolling, you know, the next year's all the planning phase of it, and then the construction phase would be in year three, so, I mean, we're looking twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one timeframe, I think, before completion or even start of the project, so...
You anticipate any dirt moving, or?
Well, if...
If so, who's responsible for that, will you guys take care of that, I mean, you're not expecting the school to...
None of that stuff, I, all the construction part of it, and I would assume we're gonna have to move some dirt in, because I know that's a low-lying area for the community and for the school district, so some dirt would have to be brought in. That will certainly be on the committee and as far as the construction phase of it and the planning parts of it, so I don't think we would rely on the school for any of stuff like that. Unless your ag class needs some work.
That would be something that, I mean, school district funds are, you know, supposed to be dedicated towards the education of kids, and I understand we're trying to tie a education component in with this, but I think we gotta be careful on that.
For sure, yeah.
You know, we already have our streetlights that are out there, so if you start putting in digital lighting, now the cost on that is pretty minimal, but we probably will want to check and make sure some of the, you know, how does all of that work for our responsibilities and for being on school property and such, you know, I think as we go forward, we'll want to double-check those things, but...
Certainly, yes, that's understandable.
It is public, you know, it is a public space, so I mean, I think about, my concern was is the amount. Right there kind of scared me a little bit, but I think, you know, depending upon, I think that's where the board, when we talk, kind of when you have a plan, I think that's when we would probably look at the finalizing of things, but, yeah, for now, I think, I wasn't. Not speaking for the board, but you guys can...
Would it be an insurance issue? Like, would our, we have to have, I mean, would our insurance, it wouldn't be, go up because we have something like this on our property, would it?
You know, we're, again, we're...
Already.
We're public, people can be, and, you know, people walk our track, people are on our facilities, you know, sometimes come in our facilities when we have a sign, but outside, it's, people are here. You know, I mean, it's, again, everything goes back to if we have, you know, big holes in our sidewalk and somebody trips, and, you know, that's where we have to maintain our property, so this would just be one of those things that...
Sure.
You know, if it's done right, you hopefully don't have a whole lot of maintenance with it, if you build it right when you start it, so...
So if somebody's climbing on the tank and they fall off?
That would be a question we, you know, want to...
That's what I would...
But we already have, you know, you could climb up on the bleachers.
Right, that's what it's...
At the football field, or, you know, someone could try to, you know, there's, there's all kinds of things, it's, you know, there probably will be a sign, "Don't climb on the tank," you know? So that, if you still climb on the tank, even though the signs said, "Don't," you know, those things.
And I could certainly ask the county how they work that, since the tank's on the county property right now, just to see if there's something written in their policy or whatever, I can, I can check with, well, I'm sharing it now, I guess, but when the new administrator gets here, so...
This has nothing to do with the school, I guess, but is that gonna do anything to the courthouse by taking that tank away? I'm an old Pipestonian, I played there a lot.
Yes, annoyingly, but I think in the long run, it'd be more well-served at the memorial than sitting at the courthouse, so... Yeah, yep, and actually, they're discussing, talking, moving it off here shortly to fix it up, the Sons of the American Legion is, so... I think it would be better served with the memorial than sitting where it currently is, so...
There's a statue there, too, isn't there?
Yes, there's a Civil War statue.
Civil War statue, too.
Quite a bit of history, if you ever stop and read that, so, yeah. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I think it, I think it's something worth, you know, giving them the backing for, but I do think we need to contact the lawyer and get her take on stuff. But again, we're already working with the city on various projects as far as the fields, so I think it should not be an issue. And if we don't have to expend huge amounts of money, it does, like you say, it's gonna be seen all the time. And I think it does put a better perspective to our kids that, hey, these people served.
I agree.
Because I know you drive into Laverne, you drive into Edgerton, they each have very nice little memorials that are there and seen.
Just need more information from you, too.
Okay.
From your committee.
Okay. So within, I'll just kind of give you a timeline, I suppose, within the next couple of months here, we should have a good drawing done, and I'll certainly be in contact with Mrs. Anderson and get on the next agenda that's available, and...
So do we need to vote to make sure that everybody's on the same page to let them move forward, or just...
Nothing's being decided, I mean, giving permission that we're willing, I guess that's, I mean, I think we're, we're there, I don't know if, if you have to make a motion to say we're, let's start preapproving things. I think we're okay with moving forward, I think until, it's hard for the school district to make a decision until we know exactly what it is and how much space. If you come and we say, "Too much space, we can't, we just don't want to give up that much, you're gonna have to scale it down," or we'll just have to work through that. That probably would be something we would do with the facilities committee, not the full board either, you know, so, just keep in contact with me on that stuff, I think, and we'll, I'll get that directed to our committees where it needs to be. So the next time we come here, you know, we'll kind of work out some of those details and prepare it for the full board.
Okay.
So, it's a good, good time planned.
Okay.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Forward to seeing, seeing these plans.
Yes.
Yes.
That's a great potential.
We're getting excited now that I've seen some drawings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so now we're gonna go back up to number six to administrative reports and information, six point one, admin, Jackie, review of budget. I don't know.
Caroline in the halls?
Okay, this is the same, this is on... Green light, green light. We're sitting at thirty-five percent, my assure we're at thirty-two percent, and it appears that the budget's okay. Like I did three budget transfers that Kevin signed off on, they were just between object quotes. I need to, when I get a chance, probably in January, look at everything again to see if I need to do a budget amendment. Hopefully, in January, I'll just get it done in January, and just review it and see where we're at.
You would recommend a budget amendment to the board, right?
How did I say it?
That you would make a budget amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make it to do the budget amendments.
I would recommend a budget amendment to the board. And then you can approve or disapprove it, how's that?
Thank you, Jackie, anybody have questions for her? Anyone have any questions for Jackie? Alright, thank you. Six point two, school board members, policy committee.
They were busy.
Yeah. We have multiple policies.
Looks like it.
I see them all, that's our...
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
So nothing else to add there?
I don't.
Get it later.
Alright, alright, well, I do have a thank you from Sharon Wolf for the flowers that we sent and lots of her flowers, so I'll pass that along to... And then six point three.
Oh, wait, can I talk?
Oh, yes.
Sorry. I'm talking as the, on behalf of the library board, they just wanted to mention, to, wanted me to mention to you, that their funding from the city, you know, increased from the previous year, but not what they had wanted. County's budget was already set, they may look at a time after the first of the year before we kind of really finalize our budget to come and talk to us about what we can do as a school. Right now, we just give in-kind, and then, I don't know, I think some, maybe it's...
Seventeen thousand dollars.
Yeah, in...
Cash-wise, actually.
Okay.
We cover seventeen thousand dollars of their actual, of their actual expenditures.
Okay.
In addition to the in-kind as far as providing the building and overhead.
So anyway, so I'm just giving you a heads-up that they may be coming asking for a little bit more money from the school's end, because they're, they will do a presentation to us. But I just said that I would speak to you guys and get it in your head to maybe see if it's something that we can increase, to help offset, you know, just some things. They just aren't getting funds all around, and we've been, I think, stationary for a lot of years, from my understanding, on this level, and they're just, they're doing what they can, you know, they're just going around making, you know, their appeal to people to try and justify what they're doing, you know, increasing, you know, activities that they're doing for the students, doing the steam room, and kind of doing all of those things, wanting to offer more things to our students, and get the kids back in the library, get the kids reading, get the kids doing things. So I just said that I would say my, my little appeal, so it gets in the minutes. So they can say I did my job, so, anyway, so just think about that, just in the future.
I'd recommend, I'd recommend Ms. Whacker maybe meet with the admin team during our budgeting process.
Okay.
We'll be starting in January and February, and if there's some things that, because that's where everything will go through, where, and if there's increases that we may want to consider for the education side of things, and what we get, maybe we can come up with something there, but...
Okay, alright, I'll let her know that, thank you.
We can make it part of the whole budgeting thing, so...
Sure.
Thank you.
We'll bring that to you in March.
Okay.
Anyone else on the board have anything they want to add? Sorry, Tam.
No, that's alright.
Alright, anyone else? Alright, now, six point three, superintendent.
Our enrollment is, again, down a little bit this month, we're down five, sitting at currently eleven forty-three, so we do the up and down through the year, and hopefully she just keeps going up. Our trend has been to typically go down here through the winter, our enrollment typically drops through the winter, but then in the spring, starts to kind of come back up again a little bit, so... But our numbers are above what we had budgeted, and so they look to be fairly healthy. Things are very preliminary, but I did mention to all of you that our first kindergarten reports are...
Mm-hmm.
Pretty...
Hefty.
Hefty, yeah. If those numbers hold true, we're gonna have, they're talking right now, preliminary, a hundred and twenty kindergarteners next year, which is six sections, so I, we're gonna watch that really carefully as we go through the spring here, but those are big numbers, so we'll see where they're at.
And let's think back to the, well, we'll talk about, I guess, the report that ISG gave us, you know, as to how many students, you know, really should be in those rooms, and, but...
And yay for us, though.
Oh, absolutely, this is great, this is great.
It is, yeah, it is, and it just, it's a good trend, and I know that we're graduating fifty-four, so for bringing in, that's a...
That's awesome.
Big jump in enrollment for next year, which is also a jump in, probably, in revenues also, so it's, we'll see where things go with that, but it's really early, I hate to, probably shouldn't say much, we'll have to just watch that, but... So, and then I have the mid-year formative evaluation that we did for the superintendent, so we have that forum, and I believe I tied it to the goals, and you just wrote in comments, and then you gave it to Wendy, and Wendy just compiled it as the board chair, and so I think, maybe, now when over the break, I don't know, maybe for our reorganizational meeting in January, and if whoever the board chair is, well, that'll be their first duty to sit down with a mid-year summit of, mid-year formative evaluation with me. It's just a matter of getting some feedback, is there things you'd like to see as we go forward, and where things are at, I think it's just important to keep having these checkpoints, I know I visit with you all, and you guys share stuff with me, so that's good, but sometimes it just keeps us focused on what our goals are and where we're going, and keeping me in line also that way, too, so...
So if I can add to that?
Do we need a due date?
If you could have that to me, yes, our reorganizational meeting is January eighth, so if you could have that to me by Jan, yeah, I don't have a calendar, January...
January eighth, obviously, is a Monday, so...
It'll be a Friday, fourth is a Thursday, Thursday's a Wednesday.
When do you start back?
We start back the fourth, so if I could have it before then, so January second, Happy New Year to you. Let's do January second, if you could, that'd be great. And then I could have it all ready to go forward that way.
Yep.
And we can just click on this and print this all off, right?
I believe so, you could fill it out electronically if you wanted to, correct?
I think if you want to, I can have Deb send this to you, because she put it on there.
That'd be awesome.
Or maybe I could put it in, I can email it to everyone, I think I might have this also, so...
An electronic version?
An electronic...
It would be nicer, yeah, right.
Then you can just type it in, and then you can just shoot it back.
I don't have very good handles.
Should I try it?
No, I know, I need to...
Oh, no.
It's getting worse, I've got to...
Everybody else is writing it down.
Yeah.
You want your own comment to be just with Wendy, we'll do our, I'll send one, though.
Okay.
Not a Google Doc.
We could do a forum.
I know we could. I know we could.
Keep at it. Alright, thank you.
And then, the next item is the virtual day planning, I met with a delegation from the teachers' unit to talk about a virtual snow day, and I'll take you back a little bit. I was at a superintendent's meeting, and from Southwest Division, and they talked about virtual snow days, the legislature passed a law last year that said you could have up to five virtual days for weather emergencies. We tried one on the election, just to see how things would go with the middle school and high school, and I guess I wasn't quite prepared, because I just didn't think we could, the day of a snow day, trying to have it ready to go, I just was like, no way. We're just not even close to that, but I did learn at this meeting that schools, instead of on their makeup day, because we have makeup days listed on our calendar, that becomes your virtual day, so you know it's coming, they plan ahead of time, so that if families do have their calendar and things set, vacations planned, they can still do that, but we can do things virtually, and so this is where we've been talking a little bit about that, and what that would look like, what the expectations would be, and where things are at, and I guess, we've been having that conversation, and I guess I'm bringing it to the board here, is that something that, we don't have in our master agreement, so I mean, this would have to be a memorandum of understanding, and, but are, is the board open and willing to, looking into this and considering it, that would be the other side of this.
Oh, go ahead, what does it look like for elementary, I mean, would it, how does that work?
Well, they actually would do, have take-home packets that they would do.
Instead of being...
Yeah, we did meet, yep.
Have advice, but...
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering about, okay.
We talked with the teachers and they said they felt comfortable going all the way down to second grade with virtual, so they went...
And the younger ones, it's not necessarily like, don't think of packed worksheets or something. Some districts have done a bingo board where kids have to complete one activity, kids have to complete one activity out of each of the areas and you wouldn't... I say bingo board just to get the visual in your, in your heads, but it would be named something else and so that they're doing something that's active, they're doing something for reading, they're doing something for math and it, it's not anything that they wouldn't already have at home, like the, the outside, the active part might be to go outside and have a snowball fight or build a snowman or, you know, to bring education back to the home as well. So it's not, it doesn't appear to be, you know, a whole lot of work for elementary kids, but it's, there are purposeful activities that are going to help them during that day.
After our discussion with the teachers, we kind of put together, proposed, you know, just something to work from. This is not anything I'm ready to say, this is what we're going to do, but this is something we talked about. And here they, I have e-learning days would be the definition for those that are actually trying to make this up as a school day. And it would be counted as, and meet all the requirements set forth in the statute that allows this. A virtual snow day does not meet all the requirements and that's what we would do like with kindergarten and first graders. They would still have activities, but you just, they really can't do enough to count it as a full student day. So we wouldn't count it as a student day, we would look at it as a teacher day, but there would still be activities and we would adjust our count. But again, this is a lot that has to go into it. But basically looking at high-quality e-learning opportunities, there would be online instruction. The law says that students must have access to their teachers either phone or email during the student day, during the school day. There needs to be some peer interactions that have to be done and there should be feedback in that interaction that occurs between the teacher and the student. Student attendance, we're looking at it being something that completion of work prior to the next day or whenever would be looked at as a, how you take attendance and we would do it. We also, another part of the law is how do you provide access to students without access? So some of it can be, they download the materials and have it on their devices. You can get hotspots, check those out and there's a variety of ways, but you do have to look at that and consider that. We're talking a little bit about teacher access and what that is and what would, what would people have to do. Student access again is Chromebook or iPad. Special education needs to be covered in the law. Here's a virtual snow day and when you talk about, Melanie talked about these learning day grids. So you get a thing, something like this where they have a snow day and they have to do like bingo or they have to do so many activities and parents initial and so teachers would kind of, and they would put this together kind of where you're at in your unit. So the reason why this doesn't get counted as a virtual day is because the teacher doesn't interact with the student that day or online.
At that level.
And at that level, so. But there still are learning activities, so they have to still plan this out, check these over when they come back, so that would be kind of where that is.
And still have access to their phone, voicemail if a parent would have a question?
Possibly.
They're still expected to.
Right, and we, there's also, there's an app that we can have staff use that they can still communicate without using their personal phone number or their cell, but the, they can still have access to their teacher through phone if they would like with that app.
We're looking at utilizing this for mutual school days on makeup days and we currently have weather makeup days of March twenty-ninth and April second would be a couple of days where you could maybe put something like this in. February nineteenth currently is not scheduled as a makeup day, but it could be. You could use a few other days that we have because now you're not requiring people to attend, but you can just look at these days. So it isn't where you're doing a lot of these, but you could maybe fit in two to three or four days of virtual if need be. I think the idea is, is that if we do some of these, this is what the teachers talked about with the election day, was having more time to practice and this would give us some of that. And I think when they get a little bit more savvy and I think we saw that if they built some of their skills to put these lessons, we could probably get to a point in a few years of being able to respond on an actual snow day, which would be the ideal, but...
Some schools are already doing that.
Some do, yeah, because they're, they've already got things in place. We're still trying to figure some things out, learn how things work and to put, make these a quality learning experience also, so.
So how's that work if it doesn't count as a makeup day for the younger kids, but the older kids are going? What, what is...
You would actually, when we report, what other school districts do is when they report their student days to the Minnesota Department of Education, they change their calendar and reduce those student days. The state wants so many hours that we, and we most certainly get that figured.
Over, over.
So it wouldn't be anything that we're, we'd lose out on any funding or anything. It's more contractual with the, with the teachers, so. And I think if you ever got where you were having ten days, you're not going to do this ten kind of...
No.
They only allowed you to do it five times, so you're not looking at, I mean, we could have a really bad winter and you're not going to do everything virtually.
Right.
This would save you from going into late June.
So just, now I'm throwing this out there, I don't have anybody in daycare, but if you've got kids and we've got a snow day and these kids are going to daycare and they have this virtual day, you know, and these kids probably aren't maybe going to have access to maybe do some of that, depending on their daycares, I guess. I mean, is, is this going to be so time-consuming that we're going to have a lot of upset parents? You know, the following day because they're spend, spending three hours at night doing homework with the, the kids to catch up? I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
One of the lessons the schools that are doing this have said, don't get carried away because they did it and kids were having ten hours of work and it's like, back it off and...
I brought up the same question at the Southwest West Central Curriculum Director of Curriculum Teaching and Learning meeting that we just had, they have it quarterly. And one of the schools explained that, you know, they're putting kind of some buffers around it where, you know, your high school classes, no more than like twenty, twenty-five minutes is how long that they should be spent, having to spend doing that work. Because, yeah, there are some things that teachers just loaded it up, you know, and it didn't work out very well. So it, it should be a normal day, however, it shouldn't encompass their entire day either. Because then you have to think about the after-effects. You know, two weeks after we had our virtual day for the middle school, high school, staff were still trying to catch up and get kids to complete what they were supposed to complete on the virtual day. You know, so it needs to be something that can have a quick turnaround so that there's adequate and responsible feedback and make things happen.
And there were, there were some who found out they gave too much work on that day.
Sure.
There was kids doing too much.
And I think that's why it's important that you just go ahead with this and try it. You have to, you have to do it to find the...
Well, and I think our middle school, high school staff learned a lot from our virtual day. And even this afternoon, I heard another, you know, tidbit of thing. I went, oh, I am so glad that you're talking to me about this because, you know, some staff, we do need all of our staff to get to the same level of technological skill. That's something that we need to work toward. And, you know, the staff who have it already were able to find things and, and they didn't realize, you know, one staff member said, I thought I was going to be able to get some cleaning done in my room. I was giving feedback and conversing with students the entire day. And she's like, I am not complaining about that, it's just my mindset was going to be different for that. And I said, well, I'm glad you were conversing all day.
Yeah, right.
I like that. And, but when staff, you know, experienced that, because, you know, we had, yeah, so.
You have to work those out somehow.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you gotta do it.
But if that is truly a snow day, are they going to have the same attitude of, I'm conversing all day?
Good point.
And to me, I mean, if, if you have two hundred and fifty kids that are going to be underserved, which is what we would approximately have at least, which would be your pre-K, your K one and two. I mean, you'd actually have over three hundred. Is it a possibility that we could see grievances filed through the, the union? Because you're having teachers paid that are not servicing their students?
Well, we already had that, we had some griev-, I mean, not grievances filed, but there was a lot of talk about where they, with this whole last virtual day amongst staff.
And then it's, it's not only your teaching staff, but your paraprofessionals have lost a day, your cooks, your janitorial, they've all lost that day as well. But we're paying the certified staff just to be available over the phone and come up with the lesson plan.
Custodians don't lose any time and the paras now because of the contract language with the weather that we put in there, they wouldn't lose any time either. They would actually not have a lot of requirements. The custodians will still work, but paras will kind of get a free day.
I guess that was, that was my question, too, amongst the staff. I mean, there was a lot of staff that's very upset about that last virtual day. And I would want to make that very clear, that that's not the case before we would go ahead doing... I mean, that I would feel comfortable going ahead, I guess, doing.
Another component of the statute is, is that this plan should be made in consultation with the teachers and that's who sat down at this first meeting. I mean, these are the kind of conversations, I think there was a lot of talk and nobody ever talked to who they needed to talk and they were making up their things that were bothering them that wasn't an issue or wasn't it? And if they want to file a grievance, file a grievance, I mean, that's, that's an issue. But one of the things you have to have is you have to have something in your master agreement that, that covers this, otherwise you can't do it. So the teachers would have to agree to, to this before we could ever do it.
Yeah.
And you had representation at this meeting from all the levels, so it wasn't just, you know, a few levels, it was all the levels that there's representation from?
There was debate on second grade, they thought first grade was really like in kindergarten, they, they were like, oh, there's no way we're going to be able, and we, we got that and that's why you come up with these. That was where we discussed and we haven't put anything in stone either, right? If we decide second grade isn't going to work, we'll, we'll change that also.
So there's no feedback from staff that they felt some people were having to work and some people weren't?
Sure they did.
Oh, okay, that was my question.
But that was that day.
Is that true?
No, I'm saying going forward at this meeting, was that a, was there a concern?
Well, now the elementary is going to end up with the ones who, what are they doing? The other ones are going to have to do stuff.
Well, no, I'm just, that's what I'm asking, you know?
And then it's all down to, then they don't like going into June, so this is a way to try to avoid going into June. Because they say those aren't productive days either. These are trying to engage and make something out of these. Is it going to be like an actual day? No, but that's why they probably limited us to five also.
I guess I feel like if it comes down to doing it in June, I could see making up some of those days as virtual days, but I guess if you can make it up March twenty-ninth or, I mean, to me, I'm still, if you have little kids, you're still putting them in daycare for that, that snow day plus that virtual day.
Yep, I know, that's one of the issues.
Which is, you know, an issue for parents, whereas...
I can't control the snow day.
Well, no one can.
No.
So they have to, you know, there, it's...
Yeah, that, that is a, yeah, I understand that, but when it's a makeup, snow makeup day and then they're saying, now we're saying, well, no, now your kids are going to be home because we're going to make it a virtual day, that might be hard for some parents with little kids to say, well, it says makeup day, you know?
Well, right now, we don't have school on March twenty-ninth.
Right.
Unless we get snow days.
Right.
There's, so I don't know, people make plans and that's the way it is. It helps you to follow your calendar and know that you can do things, maybe people, I don't, I don't think people say, oh, we better not plan anything for that day because that's a, might have a snow makeup day. I mean, you know...
I think it's a good idea to try the new plan, I mean, and just really see how it goes now that you, you've done it once and then now you've got input from everyone on all levels. You know, just to see if this might be something, you know, we'd want to pursue. I'm not saying that I think this is something that we should do every single time by any means, but, you know, to have that as an option in case we do have a true snow day. Like you say, just take baby steps and, you know, then maybe in, you know, a year or two, then that's when we've, okay, we've worked all the kinks out and now we, we think that we can do this going forward. But I think it wouldn't hurt to try it one more time. I mean, if you give people enough heads up on it. Where I feel like, there, there were some parents and, and even the kids up till the day before were sort of in the dark as to what the expectations and stuff were. So I just, and I think everybody knows that. I think that, that, I think that people have given their feedback and you guys know, working with a plan.
Just to be clear, we cannot do a virtual day unless it's approved and we have some master agreement. I think we're also going to, you know, community, where are they at? I think we just have to hear those things, but we, we can't, we have to have a plan in order to do this. So we're working on it. We may not get this agreed to this year. I, I did say that maybe, maybe if we got it, something put together and you guys thought it was okay, there is something in the statute that says you have to notify families at the beginning of the year, so. Which I don't think meant January first, I think that meant, you know, that we could have these, but, you know, so I mean, that's one of those that, you know, there's some things that we would have to check out and see, but I think we're, we're looking at it.
Yep. And it's, and it's good to get a, it's good to get a plan together and if it doesn't work out, then so be it, you can't say you didn't try.
And I think that gives the staff time to get...
Yep.
Where everybody's feels comfortable, too.
I don't think it'll all be equal, but, and I didn't know either, but when I started seeing what other schools do, they do, they do treat some elementary different. And there were some schools that don't have one-to-one devices through fifth grade like we do or they maybe had it seven through twelve, so they didn't have devices, so then they would do the alternate day. We have, at least, well, we don't have, I suppose we could try to check out grades two through four, we keep them in the classroom, but, you know, there's other components of this, too, that we have to look at, so.
I think so, too.
You know, try it.
So I guess I'm just, I mean, there's no emotion or anything, but keep proceeding. Proceed with this, so you're willing to hear, okay. Because it does have to come down to, like I said, a, an agreement between the board and, and the teachers in their contract for this, so. We can look at the paras and, well, you can do a memorandum of understanding that can open it up probably for that right now, so.
Are you in communication with other schools that this is working well for? I mean, do you use them as their, as resources?
That's where I got all this, all this information, so, yeah. There's a number of schools who have this.
And it's working well.
They, yeah. What they found out...
We're learning about it.
Yeah. And the number one, the number one thing was teachers giving too much work to kids. Just back off, you don't have to go that, that much. They did do some conversations, they had some conversations with daycare providers because some weren't willing to help facilitate some of these activities and we didn't want kids being penalized, so, you know, but you got other kids who are at home with siblings and they allow the sibling to do these things together. Of course, the older brother, sister's, oh, I'm too busy.
That's the village.
Yeah. So, but we'll keep moving forward with it, so. My other thing is teacher mentoring. Ms. Walnuts and I have attended three meetings with Southwest Service Co-op.
Southwest West Central.
Service Co-op, who has been working with the New Teacher Center to put together a support system for school districts to enhance professional practice, meaning helping our teachers become better teachers. Part of that is, is mentoring new teachers and then it's also about working with instructional coaches with veteran teachers, so kind of a comprehensive program. And I guess Ms. Walnuts and I, if you want, I, I mean, I think we're, we think this is a good thing. I think the costs right now seem to be fairly reasonable. The Service Co-op is going to need, they're, they're working to see if they will do this for sure by January, but I think we're looking at... But I think we're looking at, we'd like to see something happen. If it doesn't, I don't know if they'll do new teacher mentoring or instructional coaching. But I think either way, we can make them work, so. I don't know if you want to add anything, Melanie?
I think what we have now currently in our district for, for new teacher mentoring is not adequate. It is okay for making sure that staff feel welcome and know where everything's at and understand how to do everything and how our system works. But it's not focused on helping them become excellent instructors sooner. So our, our mentoring is really kind of like the good old pal, you know, like, oh, come on. And, you know, it's a buddy system. And what, what is, this would be, would be, we would have one mentor teacher who would support all of our new teachers. And then that mentor teacher would help them with their instructional practices as well as, you know, the things about getting to know and all that. I think when, you know, as soon as we can to get it to bleed into our, our existing staff with that instructional coaching, that, that is my ideal. You know, because if I can get our new teachers to, you know, have some really good instructional practices that are high quality and, and very effective for student learning and engagement. And, and as we move, if we can get that into all of our staff, our existing staff, I think our, our staff are gonna grow and our students are going to benefit greatly from it. So it's something that's gonna start off with our new and it's, it can bleed into our existing staff. Having one dedicated person means that that person will provide the same support, you know, to all of those new teachers. Right now, I have no way of knowing exactly what support every mentor is providing all their teachers unless they have a question or a problem. They have, they have a form to fill out, but, you know, a checkbox really doesn't show me is that teacher progressing in his or her profession? And it's about growth and it's about, when you think of a, a first-year teacher, you know, some of us experienced first-year teachers ourselves as, as students. And, you know, it, it takes three to five years for a teacher, a new teacher to really hit his or her, you know, prime time and really understand what they're doing and know why they're doing it. If we can have that happen sooner for our students, they're going to benefit greatly. If we look at our district's focus on building the foundation, if we're looking at what we're doing with our preschool and our kindergarten and moving forward, this is like building the foundation of our staff. And it's research-based. It's not just hodgepodge, because what we have now is just hodgepodge taken from here, there and everywhere. And I don't know if it's research-based or not. I, I, I depend upon research-based materials because that helps me, you know, believe it's reliable and true. Everyone with the New Teacher Center that we've met and worked with, we're fortunate because the New Teacher Center has Dr. Lori Byrd. And Dr. Lori Byrd is from Mankato State. So she's a Minnesota person, understands what we need here. And a lot of what she has done, did at Mankato State is what the New Teacher Center does.
So, okay, you have one teacher training the other teachers?
Nope. One teacher is the mentor who will mentor all of the teachers.
How does that work? How does, what does that look like?
So is that a new position?
That would be a full-time position that we have to figure out how it's gonna happen. We're hoping that it can be taken out of staff development.
So I still have, how, what does it look like? I mean, are they, is this one person coming in and doing workshops? Or how is she mentoring, or he or she mentoring all those?
From what I'm understanding and what we've learned so far about the New Teacher Center, it's a mixture of both full training together and working individually with the teachers. So it's a combo. You know, at the beginning of the year, they'll pull the new staff all together, kind of like we've always done, that type of thing. But throughout the school year, as they're seeing similar needs, they can pull them together for that. This new mentor would receive eight days of training throughout the school year. Within that, our principals would be trained as well. Because a lot of times when you have mentoring programs, the principals are outside of the circle. And these would be inside and, and work together with that mentor on, on needs of the new teacher.
So this is like a teacher on special assignment. And that's why they're being paid. It may not be one from here. It might be one that you pull from somewhere else or it is.
We're hoping that it can be someone from here.
Okay. So they get teacher pay or do they get more since they're?
Nope. They would be getting their regular teacher pay. And we would have it on as teacher on special assignment. We don't have a plan as for if it's a certain amount of time, how that's going to be. We would have to do some work with the, the board, with the board and with the, the education association, so.
This is all about teacher growth. So this person would actually be, and be in a classroom with the teacher, much like a principal maybe does evaluations. But they would, they would observe, they would sit down, have conversations. The goal would be is that that person would probably try to spend, you know, three hours a week with each of the new, new teachers. And we're looking at a two-year mentoring induction program.
So our new teachers would be within the program and serviced by the mentor for two years. And the hundred eighty minutes per teacher a week is kind of the New Teacher Center's goal. So it's a, it's exciting time for, you know, our district to start thinking about how we can groom and, and help staff grow in their profession.
So this would replace the mentoring program or the, that we negotiated into the contract then?
From my understanding.
We, we have a stipend that we can pay mentors.
Right. And we, my understanding was is we've been using that for the last two years. So that would, this teacher would replace that aspect completely then.
But like supersized.
Right. Right.
Well, and, and think about, right now, our mentor, our mentoring takes place here, there and everywhere. It's not a planned activity. Our, our mentors in October were asked on their checklist to go and observe each other. The mentee and the mentor were supposed to go watch each other in their classrooms. But then what became of that? And where did they go from there? Have, have there been further conversations about what's going on in their classroom? You know, so this would ensure better focus on the classroom instruction, the curricular planning, the, I mean, it's the whole package where what we have now doesn't even touch that, that package from the New Teacher Center, so.
So would the new mentor, mentor like an elementary teacher and a high school teacher?
Yep, it would be a mentor for the district.
Someone we, or we know that they could handle doing both or they have familiarity with, you know? Right?
It's, you know, we have a few names on the table, but, you know, it would have to be a position that would be opened up and, you know, provide equal access and opportunity to it. But know that, you know, we, we, we work with a few staff members already who are on, you know, certain committees and who work very well with their grade level teams and so on and so forth. And, you know, when you see those bright lights, you're like, oh, how can we make this capacity grow? So.
So what if we do such a good job, we don't have any more new teachers? Then what does this new mentor do?
Good question.
That would be my concern too, whether there's not remaining teachers, new teachers.
I'll let you do that.
I think the vision is, is that in two to three years, we expand this into instructional coaching for all teachers and start to support all teachers in their practice. I know that, I think we mentioned too about content areas. And I think that was when we were there, other school districts were looking at content area coaches. And my experience has been that that isn't what it's about. It's not about content. It's about teaching. It's about pedagogy, which doesn't matter if you're a first-grade teacher or a high school science teacher. Actually, those two getting together and talking about teaching is a very, very good thing. And it helps them look at things in a much different way. I think teachers can teach. Probably one of the most significant things is when they start, well, watching each other. So where we're going with this process is about another three to four-year implementation in time. We may have a couple of instructional coaches and eight teachers trained in, in other types of coaches, coaching aspects.
Good, huh?
Really nice job.
So, again, this will be a part of our budgeting process and a proposal for the board to consider looking. But we feel that we're talking about student achievement. This is where we go to enhance student achievement by supporting our teachers. I, I think I've been pretty consistent with that message of what I believe as an educator. And this is just another level. The position would more than likely work under Melanie's department. She's gonna start to get a little posse of people. Like that?
Good alliteration. Good.
That's where, that's where, that's where that mentoring and, and coaching is going. And the Service Co-op is kind of taking the lead to bring in the New Teacher Center. And I think that's, it's going to be something that.
And one thing to add, our mentor then wouldn't just be a mentor onto his or herself stuck here, you know, under me. Our mentor, by being part of this, this cohort through the Service Cooperative, has then a network of mentors that they'll be trained together with, have the ability to ask questions of, bounce ideas off of. So that is hugely appealing in and of itself. Especially if they run into, you know, something that, that they maybe don't know exactly about. They can ask their network and, you know, they can be a unit together as well, so.
But this person would be our employee in our district.
With only our staff. We're not sharing them with anyone else. They're not through the co-op. They're not driving twenty thousand miles to do a job. We have zero windshield time other than when they will go to training in Marshall, the eight times that they would go throughout the school year. It is three or four days to start, no, two days to start off. And then the two days are spread throughout to make sure that they have the learning when they need it. So, no, we're not sharing anybody. I'm a little possessive. And, you know, our staff deserves quality focus. This is just for our staff, not for, you know, any other staff, so. It's what they deserve. I think they've had a lot of, they've spent a lot of time sharing things and services and support that sometimes they didn't always receive. And I'm not saying anything bad about anyone. It's just that's how that works when you share. And, you know, it's, it's, it's always helpful when our staff can have the best in all areas. Because that's who are directly affecting our students. So I always keep that student in mind and then work backward. That's my backward planning. It's best for kids. What can I do to help that?
Thank you.
Well, when it does come to the board, I'd like to see what we figure we have spent in the last year on our mentoring program.
I agree.
Versus what it will cost for this particular position.
Any other thoughts, questions, comments? Anything else for you, sir? No? Good. All right, then we're, nothing for old business. We're moving down to new business. And to eight point three, truth in taxation, the discussion and then public comments are allowed during this, so.
All right. You have the fiscal year eighteen budget, tax levy information, an explanation of the levy in your packet. You also have the levy limitation certification, twenty seventeen payable twenty eighteen, which is the thirty-nine-page document that shows where we get all of our money from. All of this was, well, that comes from the state. The other ones were put together by Jackie that you get and lay everything out very simply. And of course, I have the PowerPoint presentation of the truth in taxation. So bear with me and we will go through this. This is a public meeting, so there can be questions asked of the board and there can be dialogue. This is one time where the board meeting is open. So if there are any questions from the audience, you may ask tonight. How's that? So here we are, truth in taxation. Basically, the truth in taxation law states that we have to send out your notice. You all got that in the mail, what your taxes are gonna be. Of course, it was sent out before the operating levy vote. So it showed that you were gonna get a sixteen percent tax reduction. The operating levy question one passed. And so now it will be a little bit different, but we'll go through that tonight roughly somewhere where that'll be. But there will be some changes. And then we have to have a meeting, a truth in taxation hearing, which is what's going on tonight. The requirements are is that we need to discuss the proposed tax levy for payable eighteen. We should talk about our current budget. And also if there's some time to comment and ask any questions, you can do that. A couple of points to remember. Revenue formulas are set by the state legislature, except for voter-approved referendums. Local levy and state aid mix are set by the state legislature. And an increase in local taxes does not necessarily mean an increase in revenues for our district. I could also add, a decrease in local taxes does not necessarily mean a decrease in revenues for us as a school district, which you'll find out by about slide thirty-four tonight. Just a quick overview of our funds. We have Fund One, which is our general fund, which is where primarily all of our education expenses go through. This is for everything I have listed up there. And that is the major portion of our fund. If you catch me saying anything wrong, Jackie. Fund Two, food service, only for food service. That's our food service program. Fund Four is community service or community education, early childhood and school readiness. This year, you're gonna see a new fund, Fund Six, which is a construction service. We had tennis courts, so you're gonna have a different fund there that got put in. And then Fund Seven, which is our debt service, which is paying our bond off on this building. Basically, our seventeen eighteen budget, the overview is, is that we're looking at approximately sixteen million dollars, or seventeen million dollars in revenues versus sixteen million last year, which is a five point eight percent increase. But the tennis courts are in there. So if you exclude the tennis courts, we are getting about a one point three percent increase in our revenues from last year. You will see a little bit of a decrease in our budgeted expectations in food service, but everything else is up a little bit. So that's where those numbers come from. Here's a little bit about our general fund. Where does our money go? Seventy-two percent of it, or where does it come from? About seventy-two percent comes from the state, five, six, five point seven percent from the federal government. And then about twenty-two percent of our revenues are local. Our expenditures, our budget for what we're planning to spend this year is about seventeen million, five hundred thousand. And compared to about fifteen million last year, which is a ten percent increase in expenditures. But the tennis courts are in there, if you recall. So we're actually having an increase in our budget of about six percent from last year. Where do our expenditures go? About seventy-eight percent, that is right in here. All of these is primarily all on the education of our children. We have about nine percent of our budget goes for facilities and providing a place for our kids to go to school. And about ten percent of our budget is based on debt, so paying off this building. How will our school tax, the local taxes that are generated, where do they get spent? Primarily, half of them go to the, to the, paying off this building. And the other half go off to funding the education program in our school district. Four percent of it's community ed and the rest is all on the education program. So the operating levy is really where that, that goes. So we're about half and half on operating levy and our debt service. Here are the numbers that we're looking at. General fund, we're actually looking at a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar reduction in local taxes for our general fund, which is an eleven point seven percent reduction. fund, which is an 11.7% reduction. Community service is up about 9%, but you can see the number's a lot different. You're talking about, instead of 1.3 million, you're talking about $125,000, which is an 11% increase. And then our debt redemption is up about $18,000 or about 1.2%. Overall, taxes are going down for the district next year. $152,000 will be collected less than there was previous years, which is a 4.79% tax reduction from the school district this year, or for next year. Why? Market values, classifications, change in property tax credits, voter-approved referendums, increases and decreases in levy amounts. Your property values, again, go up or down. There's a number of things that can cause it. In this year's case, you're going to find out it's really about equalization. The reason our taxes are going down is we're getting greater equalization from the state in some areas. Where do you find out what your property tax value is? On your tax, on your tax statement, you'll have right here what class you are. This is a residential homestead. What your estimated value is, if there's any exclusions, and then you get your taxable market value, and then they'll tell you what your taxes are. If you have any disputes, now is the time to really go down to the auditor and make those cases. They don't, you don't go to Jackie to dispute your tax classification, you go to the county auditor. Right, Jackie?
That's correct.
Damn. I've learned a lot. Can talk about your next year's if you have questions. So, anybody who watches this, if you do have questions, you can do that with the county auditor. This was something that come from MREA, just talks about market value trends, and here you got from about 2007 to today. And this is housing. You can see how that kind of was up and came down, and it's on its way back up again. This one right here is ag property, farmland. You can see how that's been just kind of going up, and it started to level off a little bit here. And then you have commercial property and all of that. They've stayed fairly stable, but you see some fluctuations with ag property and property values of our homes. And homes do make up most of the market value for school taxes. I just have to say that there's been, where does this equalization come from? It's been tried in the courts. Basically, the state has an obligation to fund education in the state, and that all kids should get an equal or a fairly equitable education. And so, in order to do that, you have districts that are very rich and other districts that are very poor. And so, in order to try to help maintain and provide some quality education across the state, they have come up with some equalization factors. It is important to note from MREA that since 2003, the basic formula, NOR equalization, have been able to keep up with inflation. And I think that, I think I've got a slide here. You will see the advent of operating levies have gone up to offset local communities have had to increase their operating levels at the local levies in order to keep up with education, which, there it is. This shows state funding is the red line. The green line is operating levy, so you can see how that's gone up. And this is since 2003, and funding has been, the revenue streams have kind of caught up a little bit here the last few years due to some increased aid from the state. So, this kind of stopped here the last few years also. I showed you this last year. This is our operating levy. This is the state of Minnesota, Pipestone. We have a $1,198 per pupil operating levy. The state average is $1,302. They did not update that number after the fall yet, so I know that number's gone up because the metro had many, many increases in the operating levy. So, that number is going to go up. I don't even want to venture to say where it is. But I think this map really shows a good, how the outstate and the metro, or excuse me, how outstate, especially out west here and down south, the pupil operating levy that you can see Pipestone, we're pretty dark. We're not the, we're not this dark brown. We're that dark maroon right there. So, we have pretty, we're above the state average. And you can see the metro is all, they all maximize, and they've got the inflationary increase all in. The metro this year, $1 billion in tax revenues were added to all of the schools in the metro area when you talk about bonds and operating levies. Twin Cities metro area, $1 billion tax increase this year. All voted, all at about 78, 80% approval. So, sorry. Market value, this is how much property value there is per student. In Pipestone, our kids have $235,000 per pupil of property value behind each student. The state average is $549,000. And again, out here, you can see we are property poor. Yellow is property rich. The metro up here, the mining areas, pretty property rich. Lake areas, all the lake homes and stuff, but around here, all farmland primarily. So, here's our operating levy. This shows you where the equalization comes in. The $300 board created gets a great deal. We actually, this is our state aid of that portion of the $300. The state pays 250, taxpayers pay 118 for a total of 368. The tier two and the local optional, this is our 474 that the voters approved to renew along with the 424 local optional. You can see that that's equalized, 484 is what the state pays of that, while the taxpayers pay 600,000. And then the remaining of our 1198, this $14 falls into tier three equal, tier three equalization. We don't get very much here. We get a little bit from the state, but we pay most of that, so. And then there's equity revenues that come. The state added this on top of. I know it's not part of our operating levy, but this is where they put it, be due to operating referendum. And the state actually levies the locals 86,000 and contributes 70,000. So, we get an additional $156,000 in equity. So, our total operating levy and equity is about $1.6 million a year. And this is how we pay this, 822,000, and the state equalizes about 805,000. We also have long-term facility maintenance. That was passed in 2015, and it was a phase-in over three years. This talks about some of the larger districts and what they invested in their facilities and what they had. So, they came up with, the state gave districts the right to levy for long-term facility maintenance. And last year, we had $292,000, $292 per pupil authorization. We now have 380, so it went up another 88. This year, the state is actually equalizing about $25,000 of it, so we will have $324,000 available in long-term facility maintenance. We did deduct the $12,000 for the tennis courts that came due this year. Next year, it'll be 93,000, and we'll look at that next year, but this is where, what we have to maintain our facilities. And you've got the facility report the other night, so $324,000 a year for the maintenance needs that we have, so we'll talk about that. Also, I'd like to add the 40% ag to school bond credit. This has also been put in place. This is a permanent law. It's annually appropriated from the general fund. As a school, we don't get to say it's a tax break from us. The state is giving this to farmers, so when they look, and I'll show you, it provides a great tax relief to the farmers on their land. As you will see, they, when they get their property statement, this is what their property taxes are before credit, so they will get what they owe the school. But then the state's going to deduct this bond credit, so they will get here this ag market value. The state will show that whatever amount that is, and the state will, we get that in equalization funding, so they will get that. So, that's where that will be for the farmers out there. It is calculated on each parcel within our district for the bond, and that's when you pay on the buildings. It has nothing to do with the operating levy. Total savings for our school district is about $490,000 per year. This is about $81 per $500,000 of land value. Lance Oy could not be here tonight, but he just wanted to say, as a farmer and school board member of the district, this is a huge benefit for all landowners in the Pipestone area schools. This credit relieves some of the tax burden agriculture has had on them for years, and helps the school district with their building bonds, so.
Thanks, Lanny.
Lance called and said he couldn't make it, and I said, "But you're going to be here in the truth in taxation." You're on the slide, so.
Thanks, Lanny.
But I don't know if anybody has any questions on ag to school, but that's going to be seen on property tax. Has anybody seen that? Was it on the preliminary? Has anybody heard?
I didn't see it.
Okay. Interested to see. I got to talk to Lance and see when that comes on there. So, if there's any questions on any of the things involved with our truth in taxation, but again, it's important that for the community know that school taxes are going down 4.79%. And this is primarily due to equalization levels of the state. We qualify for a little bit more equalization, so. Anybody have any questions to me in terms of that?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
So, here's our resolution that we're going to have. Basically, is that the school board is going to authorize that the levy for 17 payable 2018 will be set at $3,328.90.
Hard to see. Struggling to see.
Yeah. That will be authorized and certified to the county auditor for Pipestone County. So, I'll leave that somewhere in our presentation or...
We have to adopt the presentation.
Okay.
Yes.
So...
So, moving on to eight, thank you. Any other questions?
Jackie, did I miss anything?
Perfect.
Went through all the numbers, matched Jackies. I had them double-checked, triple-checked. Then she comes back and says, "Oh, they changed this," just to make me have to go back into that PowerPoint.
All right. So, do I have a motion to adopt the levy limitation and certification, 2017 payable 2018?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees. Do I have a second?
We have to do it for the specific dollar amount.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to adopt the levy limitation certification, that amount? That one, the $3,328,890?
So moved.
So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Wees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Any other discussion? Any other questions on that? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting that amount signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, before we go on to 8.5, we've been here for two hours. Does anyone need to take a five-minute recess? Or do you want to just, I think this last part's going to...
Shovel through.
Go a little, so push through. Everybody good? We just want to make sure.
Well...
You good?
I'm all...
Okay. Everybody all right?
Yep.
All right. Here we go. Just making, I just wanted to ask. 8.5, facility study work session, and this is some, you're going to just share some thoughts on that for...
Yep. We did our facility, got our information from the ISG last week, and we went through. We talked about the needs at all of our buildings, and all of you got information. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts or questions. I think the next step was is to ask the facility committee to kind of take a look at and discuss. And since we have our reorganization in January, we thought we'll need to have a facility committee meeting now, and we'll just wait until January, and then we'll sit down and start talking about the needs that we have and where things are at with all of that. I want to say that up here, we had our summary of the work session, and just for the, I think that Brown and Hill were given poor ratings because they have a lot of maintenance needs in relation to their value. That's how ISG and architects come up with their rating system. The middle school, high school is actually in very good condition, but we do have a roofing need probably in the next 10 years that we're going to have to look at that's going to be quite expensive. So, the facility committee will work with ISG and local, I think we're going to solicit some local, our community members to, you know, look over. We have local electricians and local plumbers and some local contractors that can review some of the recommendations from ISG. And if there's good questions that we should be asking, they can help us with that, so. But basically, we'll kind of start the process of looking at what do we need? Because also in there, we know we're operating at, Brown was operating at about 119% capacity. Hill was at 125. We know that we have students in the hallways, kids making up, we made rooms up in storage areas, and so we just need to look at how do we address some of those space needs that we have, so. I don't know if anybody has any comments, or we'll just kind of wait to, wait to see.
Nothing.
All right. So, we're going to move on to, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Anderson, 8.6 through 8.17, the first reading of policy 406, 418, 427, 501, 502, 504, 505, 508, 509, 512, 515, and 620.
This is correct. Yes. The policy committee went through this list, and they put down the policies that we would have just one reading and then those that we wanted to have two reading, because I would take back to an admin. We would go through those policies, get some feedback on them, make sure they align with our handbooks, and then we would bring them for a second reading in January. So, these policies, we recommend, you know, a lot of them have minor things, but we do need, a lot of them have to do with the students. So, you'll see things like weapons policies, searching, student dress, distribution of materials, enrollment of non-resident students, credit for learning and the such. I think our data, which was public and private, was that the one that was 30 pages long?
Oh, gosh.
33. That's our data privacy, so when people, they think they can get information, that's probably one of the most extensive policies, and any educator just will automatically kind of err on the side. I'm not saying anything about anybody, and that's where we have some of those issues with public and private personnel data of students. So, when a student is, there's an issue and someone, there's a discipline incident, someone may say, "Nothing was ever done," because we really can't talk about it because it's private data. I will say that we do have policies to cover about everything that happens here at school, and we follow through on our policies, and we handle things in accordance with where that's at, so. But I really can't say much more. But those are all the first reading policies, and I recommend that you move the first reading, and we'll come back with any adjustments that need to be made for January, for the second reading.
So, do we need approval on this?
I don't think we have to.
First reading, no.
Okay.
817.
All right. So, now we're going to move on to 818 through...
817 through 828.
Okay. This is smarted up.
817 says first reading.
Oh, I've got a different one. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
818 through 829.
818 through 829, and that is the approval, so.
How about I just go through and give you a brief overview of what this means?
Yes.
Policy 301 is school district administration, and policy 302 is the superintendent. This basically outlines what our role is in the management of the school district, and the only change that was made is that the superintendent will annually evaluate the principals. So, that's the change in those two policies. Very simple. Policy 407, employee right to know. It had a... It had a addition of bloodborne pathogens to all of the other policy that's included in there, so nothing else has changed in the policy except for the term "bloodborne pathogens," which we've been giving training on staff every year since I've been in education. Policy 408 is about a subpoena of a school district employee. This policy basically gives guidance and direction to an employee or a board member on providing information according to state and federal law. Again, it's probably more of a technicality than anything. If you're subpoenaed to testify, the school district attorney will be sitting with you, but we got to have him on play, on here. Policy 412 deals with expense reimbursement, and basically what they added was is that you can't build up frequent flyer miles on school, on school business, which makes total sense. This is why we use our school district credit cards for booking and doing all of that. An individual, for like me, for example, if I were to use my personal credit card and get reimbursed, but I had building up dollars or miles or whatever, you know how credit cards work now. So, that's why the school district has our credit cards, school district credit cards, and it's unethical for employees or board members to build up your own, get your own money on school district business, so that's what this policy covers. Policy 419, tobacco-free environment adds e-cigarettes. That's all it added. Policy 420, this is about sex, student employees with sexually transmitted infectious diseases. Basically, it has some grammatical corrections. It designates the school nurse as kind of the point of contact for the district, and then it also, the one change in there is, is that any, the hepatitis B vaccine will be provided to any employee who's exposed to the hepatitis B virus while in the course of work, so. I talked with the school nurse, we already do that, so we're just getting our policy updated to where it would be. Policy 421, gifts to employees and school board members. It basically included school board members in not accepting gifts and for making decisions, so that's a policy prohibiting that. Policy 422, these are policies incorporated by reference. These is another technicality. It lists all of a bunch of policies that may be referenced in other policies. 423, employee-student relationships, there was a statute update, but that whole policy basically outlines appropriate relationships between our employees and our students. It's been in place forever, no major changes, just some statute stuff. Policy 510, school activity, this is a review of why we have student school activities. There are guidelines for them. There's no changes, but this policy has not been reviewed since 1996, so basically, we're updating it, and it hasn't changed. And then policy 516, student medications. This primarily provides that we will not, there is not to be medical cannabis on school grounds, and our school nurse will not use, or we will not allow medical cannabis on school property. Also in there, it says that all non-prescription drugs should be reported as prescription drugs, so everything should go through the nurse, anybody who needs anything, the policy. Those are the two things that we have that are in our policy, so.
All right.
Most of these are nothing too significant, they're just updates that came through MSBA.
Thank you.
Seem not controversial, we'll turn it to the policy committee.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do I have a motion to approve policy 301 all the way down through 516? 301, 302, 407, 408, 412, 419, 420, 21, 22, 23, 510, 516?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Staubert. Any other discussion? Any other questions or thoughts? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mrs. Wees, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Woo!
She did it. She did the vote.